For you.
Okay, no, I'm.
I'm good.
You're on.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. Um, you guys want to move over there for your little poster?
Well, if you're able to see it, I'm sure.
Yeah, as long.
I'll move to the end and then I can see.
Yeah, some of that's, some of the screen is going to be small, especially parts of the, um, like the conceptual drawings, it might be just easy. Yeah, thank you for coming tonight. Um, this is probably our tenth or well, presentation of the sharing information on the school boards, master project, um, and bond referendum. So I'm going to get started and then there are board members here that are feeling pretty comfortable about talking about the presentation. And we always started out talking about, you know, what's important to this school? And we have two main goals, they're board goals, but they're district goals and one is for all students to have one year academic growth. And then the second one is to improve daily attendance with all kids because if they're in school, they're learning and if they're not in school, I don't know if they're learning. And then, here's the project priorities. You see, it's always about safety. We want our, our buildings safe and secure. And then we also want to make sure that our buildings are, um, up to date and modernized to meet the 21st century learning, uh, needs. And then create facilities always to, to serve our students' needs better. And then we're also looking at, um, having facilities and educational programs that are appealing to families that are going to be moving into Atlantic. We want to stay very competitive. Okay, so it was about a year and a half ago that, um, we had a goods problem. And that was, we had a, a large kindergarten class to the point where we had five classrooms of kindergarten. Um, and we had twenty-four, twenty-five kids in a kindergarten classroom, a lot of little bodies. We didn't have any space to create another kindergarten classroom. And the board said, what do we do?
Just jump in and say, I mean, part of what created that, that sort of the extra challenge for us was that a lot of them were not students that we knew were coming up. Students that are, um, littles that are in Atlantic, we usually, you know, we can, we can get a sense about that they're coming, but these were ones that were, a lot of them were moving into the district or were open enrolling in. And, um, the board had had several years in a row, um, the district was having increases in our enrollment each year, um, a lot of it through open enrollment. But a lot of it through moving in, actually, I mean, it's probably, it's both.
So the board said, what do we do? Do we start shifting third grade up to Schuler and have a three, four, five? And then is that a domino effect? They said, it's time that the district and the board review all the facilities, check out to see what our buildings, um, have in good shape and, and what do our buildings need to improve? So they started into a master facility plan. And in it, we'll show what it is, but it ended up revealing that there was a forty million dollar potential, um, project worth of improvements, a little bit of timeline. It goes back to that, uh, 2023 lack of space. And then by May, the board, um, and it was through a lot of discussion. The board decided, hey, let's hire a company to come in and do that facility assessment review, give us information because we want accurate information from experts such as construction company, they're called ICAT Estus. And then in, no, uh, December of that same year, just a year ago, they hired an architect company to start taking that information. And then drawing out schematics, blueprints to meet the needs of the high priority things.
And I'll just say that each step of the way, we just felt like we were still, um, everything was tentative, everything was exploratory. All of it was, you know what, we, we want somebody, we had somebody come in and sort of help us think about the future of our district and what were some needs? And identified that our facilities had some black, some shortcomings that we needed to address. And so we started to kind of tabulate what those were going to be. And then each time we're like, okay, well, this is, these are the things you're shaping up. We got this long list of stuff to do. And so then we're like, okay, we need people who can help us figure out how to prioritize and what's the best approach to take because we know with the regular funding that we have, we're not able to pay for all of these improvements that need to be done.
And then the next series of things that happened in May, they started hiring a communications company. And then a financial advisor, Piper Sandler. And then a few months later in July, they start working with their attorneys to start talking about bond language. And by August, the board reviews all that information and they decide how they're going to fund that forty million dollar project. Okay, so here's what the master plan looks like. All of the things there listed are high priority. I think, nope, I don't have it. Um, and this is just a bigger, um, blown up version so you can see it where you're studying.
I mean, to clarify, so that, that forty million, I mean, this is the things that we came up with that were critical need and high priority items. Because there were a lot of other items too that, you know, had yellow and red because as we continue to go through the discovery process and talking to staff and talking to members of the community and to experts, um, we really were trying to identify what are like the most important things for the board to focus on? If we were going to make significant changes now, where, where are the areas for us to focus?
Top thing you can see is this fortunate elementary, you're in the building now. Um, it has a fifty-eight and sixty-two addition and then it has an eighty-six and that was kind of on this, this north side and it's a two structure. And then it, it, it looks at Schuler and then the middle school and then the high school. There's, uh, additions and renovations at the high school. And then there's, uh, something we'll dis- uh, discuss is that, um, multi-purpose practice facility or some people call it a fieldhouse. Total project cost close to forty million. So Tuesday on November fourth, this is what's on the ballot and this is kind of the, the, the pieces that are hard for folks to understand. You know, what's the ballot going to look like? There's three things you're going to vote on. First thing is a twenty-two point five million dollar GO or general obligation bond. And that is to improve or to, to fund all the improvements that would be done in this building at Schuler, at the middle, and then some classroom renovations at the high school. That's what the patrons are going to vote on and that affects your property tax.
And security upgrades everywhere.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. And then the eighteen point five million dollar, um, vote. That is, um, voting on how you want that saved dollars to be used. That's that one cent penny tax. Everybody in the state of Iowa pays that penny tax and it goes into a large fund. And then it's divided out to all the school districts. And each school districts get, um, we get about one point eight to two million or projected that we'll be getting two million in the next few years.
And that's based on population, right?
And it's grown over the years.
We automatically get that money coming in, the board gets to decide how they want that money used. Well, the board feels that that penny sales tax, that eighteen point five million dollars, they want it to fund this building of the multi-purpose, um, um, fieldhouse. Then the third thing, here's the hard one. It's called a revenue purpose statement. You are going to have that on the ballot no matter what. It's something that the, uh, the, the legislature says, uh, the folks of Atlantic and every other community, you have to vote to give the board permission to use the saved dollars. If it doesn't pass, then the legislators will decide how that's money, how that money's going to get used here in Atlantic. You're giving the board authority and decision-making on how that money's going to get spent. It's a, it's an interesting thing.
It doesn't affect, um, you know, any taxpayers' costs or anything like that. It's just a periodic uh, affirmative vote that needs to be made. And every single candidate who's running is supportive of this. It's kind of a doing business kind of a thing because otherwise we're giving that control over that to, to the state.
The need to adopt the revenue surface statements also came about because they extended the save fund through twenty fifty-one. Um, so that's part of why they also are wanting districts to go to the voters to approve that revenue purpose statement. And extending it out to twenty fifty-one also gave school districts the ability to bond against the proceeds of that. Uh, because had it sunsetted in twenty twenty-nine or whenever it was supposed to, then you wouldn't have that time to bond against the revenue proceeds.
Say that one of your other two doesn't pass, how does that affect that vote on the revenue purpose statement?
We have to pass that regardless because even if we're not bonding against those, that revenue, we still get that revenue annually. We get, it, it's just shy of two million, about one point eight million. Um, right now, currently, we still have a revenue bond that's going to pay for the initial time that we renovated the middle school when we did that first. That was through a revenue purpose bond. At that time, we didn't have to ask the public to vote on it. We just used those funds, a portion of those funds to do that. And then a portion of that comes into the district annually and we use those dollars for other capital projects, maintenance type stuff.
Okay, because that's where it gets kind of confusing.
Yeah.
Is, is that, that revenue purchase statement, it's like, what does that tell you about that? So, okay.
So if it doesn't pass this year, it'll go back on again next year.
Yeah, every, every district has to have that pass in order to use those funds. So there are already like two hundred districts that have put it or have it on the ballot this time. Those other districts will have to have it pass before twenty twenty-seven. So we're putting it on the ballot just in case it wouldn't pass. We have another chance to do that.
Okay.
And if it doesn't pass.
And if it doesn't pass, like Laura said, we are not able to use those funds for the school purpose. It would go back.
Until twenty twenty.
Yeah. It, it's when that original sunset day, date closed, I believe, so.
Does it go in, I mean, so it doesn't get passed, where does that money go? Does the state sit there and hold on to it for the community?
Um, we get it, but they decide how we're going to use it.
Yeah, and it could go, it could go. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know exactly what that looks like because almost everybody passes that. I don't, I don't know. Anyone where it doesn't pass.
So kind of the, the two divisions of what it looks like, if you just want to list it. Left side is the GO bond at twenty-two point five. Kind of a listing of everything at Washington, Schuler, Middle, and then the high school. And then on the right side, a listing of what that sales tax, that saved, the penny sales tax bond with cover.
How long does he, uh, how many years to pay off the bond on the left?
Our financial advisors are trying to target it for twenty, twenty years. Um, you think it'll be twenty? Could be, could be more. Past experience for me in, in most districts, you can refinance when that interest rate continues to go down and, and you're going to lower the year debt and you may pay a year off early.
We, we did that on the current bond.
Yes.
And so, um, that bond is being paid off early. And so the current debt that we have right now on the levy is for, um, the work that was done at the Trojan Bowl, the softball, baseball field, the new tennis court. Um, so that will be paid off this year.
So what are they currently using for, for the training and stuff? I mean, is that all done here? Does some of it get done at the Y? I mean, like the kids, do they use the weight room at the Y or do they have a weight room here?
We have a weight room at the high school, um, but it is very small and it is on a, it's a mezzanine, is that what you call it?
It's the mezzanine level. If you're at the high school and you're on, um, I don't know, the side with the announcers. It's kind of up above there. At one time they had some wrestling and things there and they use that. So it's up there. Um, it's really cramped and outdated. So that, that would be where, what the weight room is currently is. Um, I would say, no, we really don't use many facilities at the Y with the exception of the swimming pool. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Busy for everything. So.
Yeah.
Um, you know, basketball courts, um, high school all the time, middle school most of the time. Once in a while, I know my kids, when they've had to, um, do tennis indoors, they've been like in here trying to play tennis. Is that a new construction? That would be new construction, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Just FYI, we had basketball practice in here right up till five fifteen. So we were rolling in the TV and they were having basketball practice.
Middle school.
What?
What age of kids?
I think they were third or fourth graders.
And, and my kids have been, now they're all out of the school system now, but we would come here for middle school games sometimes too. So, you know, that was going on in here, um, because those other facilities were being used for um, practices and competition, the middle school sometimes for the high school.
Facility would just let some of, let, let our kids expand their seasons. Um, because a lot of these things, they only have outside right now, batting cages and, um, uh, tracks and stuff like that.
Okay, we've got some drawings there.
How many years for the, for the, uh, fieldhouse?
Right now, depends, depending on the cost. So they're maximizing what they think is kind of a very conservative max fund. The board has said they don't, no, it'll be, you know, what they think it could be.
Our hope is not to, that's the max.
Yeah, exactly. Anywhere from twenty to twenty-four, depending on, you know, the amount of money that comes in every year on that.
What we're seeing for constructive money since it gets developed.
Save, no, we use it like sixty percent of it.
Yes, I think that's about right.
And then we save the other forty back for just, uh, maintenance projects that we need to, like right now, we're doing a replacement to high school and we just save that money until we have enough to do a project or a smaller project. So then the board is really aware of how they're, they're trying to fudge their money, save it and still have enough money to pay for just their maintenance and improvements in other areas. Okay, just a quick look, that GO bond for the, um, this building and, and all the academic um, renovations in addition, it has to pass by sixty percent for that, that to go through. And the other two just need a fifty percent approval by the voters. Oh, here's a little bit on that sales tax. Just like, uh, Christine and Laura said, one point five to two mil, that's what we're being advised with our financial advisors. Um, plan is to use about one point four yearly to pay off that bond debt. And then keep about six to eight hundred thousand, six hundred to eight hundred thousand. And again, just a little statement that says it gives the board authority to use that money where they see fit. All right, here's Washington Elementary, just a listing of all the things. And then we'll show you.
I'm so glad that we're like in this building for this. We should have done all the presentations here.
Yeah, and it's not as noisy as.
Talking about how this gym, the sort of the inadequate lighting and how warm it is and how much use it gets considering how old this has been and.
And this is actually a portion of the building that they deemed was okay for us to, to keep. This is the best portion of the building.
Which, which lets you know about the rest of it. I know that I was told when I came on the board several years ago, um, art and music classes are just in regular classrooms here. And so they're quite small. I mean, they're really just meant to accommodate kids in rows and seats. Um, not all of the stuff that you need to be able to do art and move around and the equipment you need for music.
And this room is also the lunchroom, so for a good portion of the, well, the middle of the day.
Curtains come down.
And curtain comes down, they do gym on that side, do lunch on this side and.
Serve six hundred kids in here.
Yeah, yeah.
Every day for lunch and breakfast.
It's a busy place.
Yeah, it's crazy. So here's the, kind of just a bird's eye view of, of the campus here. Ideas, and this is just conceptual.
So this is, this is Washington. So this is where we are right now, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And so this is the entrance through here. Oh, this is what it's, how it's going to change though. Like some of that is the way.
Propose. So we want to, with, we, we realize we've got to add some classrooms on. So the top brown box to the top left corner, that is just a.
That'll be the first thing.
Yep, kindergarten, first grade wing that, uh, it, it, it's conceptual. If it could look like that, they think that's a better location for it. Just on this campus because of the structure of the, the ground and it kind of sits on a hill here.
Where those old tennis courts are.
Yes. And so that would be new. Um, here would be the area that has this, um, fifty-eighty addition. It sits right under here. So you see a little bit of it there. Sits right under there. Um, during the summer, they would demo that out. And then they would add this as the new, new addition and renovation. And then also work on this. They've got it scheduled in, in phases where they're telling us it's highly doable to have it done, you know, continuously without, uh, having kids go to those portable classrooms. So. Okay. We also are, I'm going to make this a little larger. Here's a larger version of it. Think, can it see it a little closer?
So this, this whole, this portion we're in stays as well as the media center that's back there.
And there's a sped kindergarten and first, that's what that wing would be. And then this, this is all, or this portion would that be that eighties addition and that would stay.
What happens to that retaining wall?
Good question.
Right outside of it.
It needs a lot of work.
Yes, it does.
And we told the architects and the, uh, ICAT that something needs to be done there. And they said, we'll work on it, but right now here's just conceptual. But it, it is a, a kind of a itemized thing that.
They're aware that that will be built into plans once we get, you know, architects that are doing the actual design and site planning and.
Low maintenance and something that we don't have to worry about for years, right? We are also looking at moving our preschool to this campus. Some reasons for that, right now it's over at the old Lincoln building, early, uh, learning center. It's hooked onto the Whitman. Um, there are four classrooms over there, so we can have four or eight half-day preschool for four and three-year-olds. What we're being told, and even if you've seen some of the news, it's coming out that the governor is really pushing um, her last year for early childhood, uh, initiatives in what we are being told what that kind of means is that she is really going to promote funding for all-day preschool for four-year-olds. Um, right now, she's got a couple of grants out there for, um, high poverty areas that you can apply for the grants. Um, but you can tell that it's, it's something there. Right now, our preschool is not, uh, we're not ready for that.
We don't, we don't have space and that building is, is really, um, antiquated. Um, the bathrooms are really insufficient. It really was not made for little tiny kids. And so there's had to be a lot of modifications made. Um, and then also Stacy Horning, who's the principal here at Washington, is also the principal for that building. And so she's, you know, they're not getting as much support from the administration as they would like to get. And she's having to run back and forth, um, you know, to be able to oversee and support those teachers.
Other things they don't have. And so if it turns all-day preschool, right? They don't have an administrator there. They don't have a nurse there. They don't have lunch there. There's all those things that, you know, regular elementary has for all kinds of support, music, art, PE, any of those things that, uh, like a kindergarten student would have. If they're going to go full day, we almost have to kind of think about them as young pre-K students.
And I would say in our district, you know, we, we have work to make do, um, because preschool used to be here. And then as we saw a greater needs for things to be here to have more classrooms, um, that was the solution was to, to move preschool over to the Lincoln Elementary and, and it, it's worked for a while, um, but we're sort of outgrowing that space as well.
One of the metaphors that came up as the board was talking about this is how, you know, if you live in a house, it can, it can look fine for a while, but over time, if you never make any upgrades or improvements, it starts to be dated, things start to fall apart. Um, and that's kind of what's happened is we really tried to, to scrimp and make the best that we could and people have adapted and people have, you know, but there comes a point where we start to say, you know what, we really want to take care of, um, take care of our facilities and take care of our kids and our staff through that.
Will there be, uh, will there be like sidewalks all the way around this school?
Good question. I don't know. If that were important, that's exactly the kind of thing that comes up during the design phase when they're getting input from people.
I mean, right now, we, people walk here down to the the softball banks, but I'm there, there's the, that doesn't show. I mean, you're going to have school out here, it doesn't show a sidewalk anywhere there.
Yeah, yeah, that's what a lot of it has to do with it, just them. I think for the board, it was really important to try to understand what's the building actually going to look like and how many classrooms do we have? And how is that different from what we currently have? And so we weren't focusing as much on that other than to be like, we want access to the playground. And, you know, it's really important that people, um, that pick up and drop off be good, be improved if it possibly can. Um, so that's.
But those are good things to capture because I know that, um, I, I've had people say to me, we need lighting and security, you know, uh, on the, the other side of, I forgot where I'm at, on the other side of Washington is we're going to the Trojan Bowl because you got kids playing there and coming up to the playground and there's, you know, issues there that parents are concerned about having better lighting. And so sidewalks, all those things go with it.
Kids go to school and come home from school in the dark sometimes.
Well, and, and for those games and things that are happening where kids are running up from baseball, softball or football games.
Here's Schuler Middle, um, middle school just was renovated. It's a beautiful place. If you haven't been in that building, it's still as pretty and nice and gorgeous as, as ever been. So really no renovations in that area other than a secure entrance. So, you know, we can kind of manage and control, uh, the floor traffic and people coming into the building during the daytime. Um, one of the things that was, um, um, identified was Schuler, um, in the gym, that's our main kitchen. The Schuler and the middle school kids, uh, eat lunch in that gym. It's a large kitchen, but again, they divide that gym down with a curtain and they're doing PE and lunch on one side. And then sometimes they do a double lunch. And they said, it'd be nice if we could have their designated, uh, cafeteria common space. And so they looked at different things and they, they knew that that skywalk, uh, the catwalk, it also needed, uh, renovation. And they said, let's just combine that into a commons and also a skywalk. So here's the skywalk right here, right? It goes all the way across. And they said, let's just make this, I think it's forty feet wide. So we can have lunch. We can also use it as a pathway between both buildings. And then, I mean, they could have small classroom meetings here, kind of a small assembly. It's just a multi-purpose space.
I was in the first class in that new building.
Wow.
Dating myself here.
Okay, that's pretty cool.
Been a while ago.
It's in pretty good shape too.
It, it is. I mean, for as old as it is, it's, it was built well.
Yeah, it is, it is. And, uh, any of the improvements at Schuler, original restaurants, they are original.
Right.
So all the plumbing and fixtures and everything just needs to be replaced. And then here would be the, here's the, the entrance into the middle school, the old high school. And again, um, they, they gave us an idea of what a secure entrance would be. And same thing over there at that yellow box coming into Schuler.
I think that's, now those are the bathrooms.
Oh, I guess we can't see it on this drawing.
Yeah, it's out.
High school, high school is our newest building. It's thirty years old. I don't know if we can really call it new, but it's the newest of the buildings. And it's in great shape. Um, hardly anything's been done in that building except for maybe some new carpet, some new paint, maybe some ceiling tiles. Otherwise, everything's original. And it's probably time, a thirty-year-old building. Um, and you can see what they're looking to do. We'll have some drawings. So here's the entrance to the high school, right? It's yourself kind of barriers. Here's the lunchroom, the commons. Some of the things they discovered is that, um, we need to have a more secure entrance when people come into the building during the day. Um, this is our media center, the library. It's a large, large uh, room, classroom, and it doesn't serve the same purpose it did thirty years ago. There's a couple stacks of books. I think on this wall. And after that, there's really, you know, books in that library because everything's electronic.
Right.
So it really doesn't get used. It's in the center, the prime real estate location of the building. Um, being suggested to use it as a multi-purpose classroom flex space. So flex it for, you know, you have a small classroom work and meet there, small individual things. This could be a, a computer, a lab. This could be, you know, some more meeting space. Again, just kind of flex that space for different groups of kids coming in and working together. Either in, um, partners or like a team working together.
Some of these kind of changes are actually like not that costly because a lot of it is just reconfiguring the space we already have, the internal space and trying to make it so that it's upgraded, updated for the way that schools more commonly get used nowadays.
One of the things too we're learning is that we're trying to accommodate the learning needs of today's kids and then and kids of the future. It's different than it was just ten, twenty years ago, very different. We have to prepare kids for either going to college or workforce or whatever they're doing. And it's not having kids set in rows and, and sit and get it from the teacher. They, we're being told the employers want kids to learn how to communicate and collaborate and talk to each other. Practice that skill because you know what? They spend a lot of their time doing is on the phone, right? We, we need to get them back talking. So that's this whole idea of trying to force, you know, more collaboration, um, space. So, um, they're practicing that skill. So that's what these little flex spaces are at. Oh, God, yeah. Um, kind of a, a, a kind of a wide angle view of that same campus, our CTE, um, programs. So that would be like industrial arts, ag, aviation, um, home app, any of those, those programs that kids are learning a specific skill. Um, those program and spaces need to be updated right now. So and again, they're, they're thirty-year-old classrooms. Science, uh, lab needs to be updated. And then you could see that these are four new classrooms. And then here's that practice, multi-purpose practice facility. And that's just a, a conceptual idea of information that we, um, learned from the coaches and, and athletes and anybody that is involved in some kind of um, need for that. They tried to locate it here, close to our current competition gym. That box doesn't fit. They thought about putting this here. Doesn't fit. They even thought about putting it right in here.
Yeah, that was the best proposal our architects had come up with. I really thought that it was going to be able to fit into the back. And I know I've talked to a lot of other people in the community that were like, why in the world aren't you just putting it right out here on the east side? And it's like, you, you kind of, you don't necessarily realize how little space. And it's like you you kind of, you don't necessarily realize how little space that is. And um when you're actually talking about having a large space, you have to have people flow around it. Uh yeah.
So here's that practice facility. Coaches and and the group said it'd be nice to have three full-size courts for all kinds of practice and and multiple um groups and teams working together. We also would like to have uh locker rooms there. We have P E in that space during the day. Uh trainers room, these are those classrooms. They also wanted a running track. Or track for cross-country um or um conditioning. And then a a large weight room. This would be a turf area. These are ideas that that were presented and this is kind of a conceptual idea of what the architects came back with.
And most of this has been worked on by all of our our coaches and um the the people who do all kinds of athletics um at in our school district. Like they've all had input into this. Um I would say more so than the board even because we sort of had the initial uh the overview of the kind of things that would go in there, but they just kept on working at it and talking to kids and talking to parents and um and their athletes and um saying the stuff that they most needed.
And they put it together on a square footage basis. So it's it's priced out by square footage. So um very much this could change if you change the the footprint. You can take a cord out, you can you can adjust that. Um which was important to the board. Um I won't be on the board making that decision, but should this pass, the future board will need to decide and they'll need to go back to the public and say, okay, what does this really need to look like? What's what's most important?
Well, I mean, you know yourself, you've had kids go through um the school system. The more that they are in actively participating in all kinds of activities, more likely to do better in school, come to school, be a happier kid because they are engaged. So if we can have facilities that uh encourage that participation, we're gonna have a better student, you know, a better adult. We also know things have changed in the last ten, twenty years. Uh just like I said, we had practice going on here right before we we started. Uh I have grandkids, kindergarten, first grade kids that have organized practice a couple of times a week. Uh which I think is interesting, right?
Parents want to see it every year. It's another part of it.
Yeah, so it it just that younger age now, um the families, that's how they're choosing to do their their entertainment, their social life. Is getting their kids involved.
Yeah, my my youngest graduated two years ago. And when she went through, we didn't have activities starting until, I mean, I think for her, it was like third, fourth grade things started. So it has just been within the last ten years that it has crept down. So all of those teams are looking for spaces to practice. And at that same time, you know, I think it's fair to say the pressure on the Y for their space has increased as well. So when my kids were in school, that's where they practiced with those youth teams was in the back gym of the Y. Well, the back gym of the Y's got cardiac rehab and equipment and all kinds of things in there. So it's it's really not available to youth teams like it used to be.
And if the Y does the renovations is talking about, I don't I don't think it's really gonna be more. They're not adding gym space. Um and so, you know, this is kind of it part of the harder from the beginning when the board was talking about this particular facility, we were thinking about it as how much community use can we do with this? It really was, you know, it's connected to our high school. We certainly are excited about the possibilities of hosting tournaments and um expanding access for the younger kids and stuff like that. But, you know, we also thought that there's people in the community who would really love to have space like this and teams from the smaller towns around us.
We can host all kinds of events too, music, any kind of, and we host a lot of music competitions. We just had one yesterday at high school. I think um I've lost track of my days.
I know, I just remember last weekend.
But you know, we host a lot of events. We were also looked at because of our location, pretty centralized between, you know, Des Moines County plus. Um they really do want at night to do to host a lot of events, more of a sub-district, district level. This is a mezzanine, so this would set above that court running. I don't know if I mentioned that or not. Here's examples of the secure entrances. You can see how you'd enter Schuler. It feels like a turnkey. You know, they buzz to get in. Okay, buzz in to get in, stop and talk to the secretary in the main office, sign in, get a badge. And then we allow you to go into the building. Same thing at the other two sites, kind of that thing. This is again conceptual. Oh gosh, kind of an interesting piece. This is from our financial advisor. He thought it'd be interesting to show just this right here um shows, okay, here's here's that forty million dollar cost right here. He's projected it to have a four point three interest rate, right? If we back it up just a few years back, that forty million dollar project just a year ago would have been at thirty eight. And you'd see what it would be then if we backed it all the way up. And then the interest rates that go right along with.
And also going forward, if we delay, um you know, some people are feeling like, well, why not just wait? And the the two things are that, for one thing, we have already done that in the last couple of projects. We've brought up the idea of an athletic center like this and each time it's ended up kind of on the cutting room floor. Um with the idea of, well, maybe that's something we'll get to do later. And so we kind of wonder, well, you know, our kids are all growing up and growing out. You know, when does the later happen? Uh and then the other reason is the costs are just gonna go up, you know, if if we're scared by the idea of spending um sixteen or eighteen million on one. The costs are gonna go up for that as we go forward.
More just tidbits of information, just the borrowing capacity. These are things that um financial advisor um dug into the numbers. You know, what the board could afford to do, what the district could afford to do. And you can see that the this is what the board was advised, that they could go up to fifty-three to fifty-five million dollars if they needed to. They don't need to do that. And they also are aware of different fund buckets. So they've got a pebble, a save and a go, a G O. And these are the amounts that they were advised that they could max out on and still um manage um a a healthy budget and provide a quality education. So you can see they didn't go um all the way up to their max amount on the
Finances are quite strong right now and um we don't have a lot of debt and so that's why we have a lot of capacity. Um but yeah, for sure, we didn't want to go all the way up to that. We felt like our needs are pretty important. But it wasn't like all of our buildings are falling down around us. Instead, we decided to just really prioritize the most important things that we could do um with the debt capacity that we have right now.
So this goes back, this is just recent information, even as as recent as June of twenty five. Here's what the board was thinking about. They were thinking about doing a twenty-eight point five G O bond and then a smaller sales tax. Uh and they realized, ooh, that's gonna put a little bit more of a tax burden on the property owners, right? How can we do it differently with less property tax impact? So then the financial advisor said, here's four different ideas. What do you think, board? And so that's where they came up with our current plan to keep property tax as low as they could, still have the same projects ta- taken care of. And then they ended up splitting it into two different bond amounts for that forty million dollar project.
On that property tax, people won't see as much of an impact because of, as Christie was saying, that previous um bond payment is falling off. And so there's already going to be, if we didn't pass anything at all this year, um there would be a drop in terms of property taxes. But if we pass the G O bond in particular, because that's the one that impacts the property taxes, we're gonna go up a bit, right?
A a dollar ten.
Dollar ten, yeah.
Which will show you what that does for your taxes on your property.
It's gonna get paid off. What is that right now? What levy, this levy on?
A dollar forty.
Yeah.
A dollar forty. I have a debt service, yeah. So and and this proposed project is um two dollars and fifty cents is what the the twenty-two and a half million is represented by two and a half dollars on your school levy. So we've already got a dollar forty on there. We're asking to raise it approximately a dollar ten.
Cause yeah, cause that.
So that that was kind of a little, it's almost a little misleading when you say only going up a dollar ten.
Right.
You're yeah, you're wondering, you're wondering how can you fund twenty-two and a half million with, yeah, yeah.
It's because you're getting into it more deeply. Most people really just want to know what's the bottom line about what the impact's gonna be. And that is what, that's the impact they're gonna see. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just review on that revenue purpose statement, same stuff that we've kind of talked about already. It's in that handout too, if you want to go back. Um same stuff we just talked about, historical content on the G O.
Oh yeah, there's your answer. What what's on your levy right now is that dollar forty. Typically, the last five years, that levy rate has been three-ten. So it was a little bit of a drop this past year because we we just have the remainder of it that we're paying off this year. It's not a full payment.
Financial advisor notes. Plan for twenty-four years. We think it'll be done in twenty. Um approximately one point four mil on the um save tax um bonds. They think a four point three interest rate. And he did say it's it's dropped.
Well, or the 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 most likely is that they are gonna drop a bit, yes. Which makes a big difference when there's a lot of money.
Oh, this is kind of interesting. So you can just see the tax levy rate um in the past years goes back to two thousand fifteen where it was. And what it currently is in in twenty twenty-six, that's this fiscal year as we call it. Last year, it was at its lowest. So is that twelve dollars and fifty-one cents? It went up slightly, twelve dollars and two cents. Comparison, our Hawkeye Ten Conference Schools, you can see where we're currently at, twelve fifty-two. And how we rate with the rest of the conferences. What I'm being told, Dennison and Preston are looking at some bond projects too, low central. The the financial guy said it's always gonna be low. They've got so much um tax base there with all their large businesses and with all Yeah, they just, it's always gonna be low. So over here, um if the bond passes, it'd be thirteen sixty-two and it would fit right in here. We'd still be under Harlan, Shenandoah, Rito, who knows where Preston and and Dennison are gonna go. Cleveland's always got stuff going on down there. Impact. There's that dollar ten we talked about, right? I think I remember hearing the board say often, they want to keep the tax impact, the levy low. Let's work to keep it between that twelve and fourteen dollars. That was their goal, almost. Kind of an interesting chart that the uh financial advisor gave the board. And it's just a calculation to show if your house was valued at a hundred thousand dollars valuation, what would it end up being as an additional tax? It'd be forty-six dollars for that year. And you begin at four hundred thousand dollar house. One straight, it'd be a two hundred and three dollar addition to what you're paying for this current property tax. There we go. Commercial property, same type of thing. Over here. And then ag. If you have gone to our school district's website, there is a link on it that says bond referendum. If you open that link, lots of tabs and things to look at and read about what we've already covered, but it also has an interactive um part that you can put your actual evaluation in and it'll tell you exactly what the projected cost is. So that's kind of fun to go do. Oh, and then here's our town hall meetings. We've got one scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday next week. Okay, questions? Or have me back it up a slider too.
Well, you guys have done great at interrupting and asking as we go along, which is the best way to go ahead, so.
So say that one or the other does not pass, will you put it back on the ballot next year?
Good question.
That would be up to the next board. Um that certainly would be a topic of conversation. Um almost certainly it wouldn't be in the same form that it was, um you know, given that the voters had already said no. And also given the costs continue to rise, you know, I I have to figure that that would that would enter into it as well. So yeah, there's no, there's certainly no kind of guarantee that could be made at this point either way.
So if it passes, when maybe planning on starting construction?
We would, we would start with um hiring architects and getting an actual designs that were nailed down, which would involve a lot of community input. And that would be the work of basically this school year. Um because they would want to get started, I think in the summer, that would that be the first
They said they could break ground. If it passed in November, they could start breaking ground this summer.
Yeah.
And then it would go continue on until, you know, it was done.
And and that would be that first phase that would kind of build separate from the school, you know, to get that finished. So it would, whenever it started, it would go throughout the whole school year all the way around.
Right, yeah. And I don't know about the other parts. I don't remember if we've ever talked about the other pieces of that, like
They do simultaneous. We would, we would want to say here.
Secure entrances would probably be done pretty quickly because they're they're not as big as the Washington construction.
Right.
So how long are we looking at traffic headaches out here?
Tracking what?
I mean, that's gonna make it even worse.
Yeah, I know where they'd stage it, but that would be part of that design, whether we're gonna stage just construction material and
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's I would say then you could access something to spread out that traffic.
Yeah, that was the main, that was the main idea they had, although they did acknowledge they're like, it's it's not great, you know, they they were, they weren't like, oh, there's really an obvious solution that we can easily implement. It was more like, it, you know, so I I kind of, I kind of feel like it's gonna be better than it is, but it's still, there will be pinch points.
Where can I see the enrollment numbers?
Um I can get that information.
Ten years.
Yep. Well, you can go the the quickest way and you can go to the Department of Ed and just do a search for like enrollment, enrollment trends. It'll give it for every school district in the state of Iowa and then historical numbers and then projected numbers.
Yeah, and Jordan probably knows the exact website to give it to you, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's all there. And that's what we take our information from because they're collecting census on numbers um. Or just, you know, and they know accurate numbers for past.
Those, those are the official numbers because for us, you know, enrollment fluctuates.
But it didn't go, it didn't show a very uh long timeline.
Yeah.
It was like a year or two.
I I think they ever projected out to twenty-nine. No, maybe they might further than that.
Backward, he's talking about backward.
Oh, um.
Two thousand this year.
Yeah.
On our website, that's we start from that.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I I can just say from recall, the last ten years, I mean, we've been as far as grade level class sizes. We've been anywhere from a hundred students to kind of that hundred and twenty-five has kind of been the average and it just depends where those highs and lows are. Some grades have less, some have more. Um it's been
Graduated a class just a year or two ago. It was on like eighty-eight or something.
But it's been a long time since we've had classes of a hundred and fifty or so. I don't know, Chuck, do you remember what was in your class?
A hundred.
You had a hundred, yeah.
I had a hundred and twenty-nine.
You had a hundred and twenty-nine?
Two hundred and twenty-nine.
Two twenty?
Yes, yes, yes.
We were the biggest class that ever graduated.
Wow.
And so our, and I think we graduate, I think we graduated a hundred and eighty-nine.
You were in the baby boomers, weren't you?
Yeah.
Cause you were in that brand new building.
That will, that will draw young families, it definitely will. And that is part of what we think of is, you know, our school district is in competition with other school districts. And um being able to say, especially for the youngest families and for the youngest kids, we have brand new facilities. It it's a selling point. It draws people.
Well, and and we've always struggled with that if, you know, if you have more than five sections, five sections is about twenty-five kids per grade, which for kindergarten is too many, but you know, for another grade is maybe not comfortable, but it, you know, it it's doable. Um it's when you get over a hundred and twenty, so when you start pushing some of those classes have a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty, then all of a sudden, it's like, what do we do? We need another section um to be able to manage that with what's best for students.
And Washington is so full, but
And so they don't have the flexibility to do that. We we have been known to have teachers kind of float, you know, over the years. And so, okay, here's our big class of third graders. Well, now they're going to fourth grader, we need to shift a teacher up. And we've been known to do that um over the years, but we're just, we're we're kind of in that bubble and I I feel like that's been consistent with those five sections. For fifteen years.
I want to be honest about enrollment. It's hard. It's hard to predict it for very long because so many other factors go into it. But to to my mind, as the school board president, my part is to make sure that our school district is ready to accommodate whatever students are here because we love them all, whether it's a small class or a big class. But also to do what we can for the facilities so that we're, we're not, uh, you know, But also to do what we can for the facilities so that we're, we're not, uh, you know, keeping people away. You know, we don't want to be an impediment to people choosing to move to Atlantic, we want them to be drawn to be part of the community that we have and the school district that we have. I feel like that's part of the trust that I have, um, you know, from being elected here and um, and so, you know, it it's. It's daunting for us, you know, you worry um, about the headwinds that that we're facing economically and and societally. But um, we're still gonna have people here in Atlantic and we're gonna have kids here in Atlantic, and so we want to serve them the best we can.
Yeah, and we, and we want to be positive and and aware of what's going on in the community also with Vision Atlantic and the work that they're doing and the housing that's being built there, you know. So if we do have families coming in that are moving in there, then. Um, we don't know, I mean, that's part of the uncertainty of enrollment, you can look at data, but you know, a few little things change. And that that changes, so trends, trends are fine, but um, it's hard to predict what that means for the future.
Anything else we do, we're gonna need to in a few minutes move into a meeting, so.
If you do have any questions, give me a call, I'm fine, you know, give you more information. Kind of big picture idea so you have a good idea of what the board's been working on.
Or that bond website, there's links to it on paperwork this year too.
And you of course are welcome to stay for our meeting as well.
Hey, well, this is very informative. Like I said, I've read all of your stuff that's been in the papers and on the radio, but it's kind of nice when, cause a lot of the diagram stuff you couldn't really see.
Well, take one of the papers and you can study it after you.
I've got these, yeah, that's good, that's good.
Okay, I'm gonna. Sit this ready, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you guys have a PowerPoint that you do?
Are we just leaving it on and rolling into the meeting?
Yes. Do you have that PowerPoint?
What's the name place? Nice to meet you. Sure. Is it on this side?
It's on this side.
Some are on this side. Okay, maybe we should.
We're just saying, we're not gonna be able to see the presentation. Well, cause she was just saying, she should just sit around. It sounded like a TV.
On both sides of the case, we were saying they could set like a different thing. Let the board present each decision. Which pod is my sweet? No, that's fast. Why is that?
Yeah, you can't play on.
How about if we move it back that way? Yeah.
I'll just keep holding the cord. About eight years old.
Then everybody can kind of see.
There's a chairs we can. So our, our saying all.
This is like, bite your tongue, young lady.
Our, our closest neighbors, they're. Seven. And then our other neighbor on our. But not quite as bad, but has health issues. This guy's just down the road a little bit. Just like dudes. Well, that would maybe share your screen.
Almost thinking.
Because I probably.
I think we're actually.
I don't know, so well, I don't know if the internet's.
And I've been saying usually.
This is, I super loved it. TV, so when you released. It's that line that said he releases.
It was just my cars. Everybody's.
I saw you, J C.
I'm sitting out of the way.
Yeah, can you read? Could you read in? And I want you to know how to turn pages. And then my page got cut at a very end.
Anniversary, first day of the US.
So I best didn't watch that game.
How funny. Yeah, it was super fun.
Six thirty two, if you'd like to.
Yeah, sure. Um, at this time, I will call to order the um, special meetings of the Atlantic Community School District School Board. Uh, for October twenty second, twenty twenty five, we'll begin with the roll call.
Judy Goodrich?
Yes.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Josh McLaren? Laura McLean?
Yes.
Christie Bella?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, at this point, I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
So do.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christine?
Yeah.
Jenny?
Yes.
And now we get to enjoy a presentation um, about our English language learners. Are you guys gonna introduce yourselves?
I'm Julie Coffey.
Lindsay Roberts. Sherry Anderson, my real name Cheryl.
Was it Lindsay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna be starting first, I'll speak earlier. Okay, so I'm at Washington, this is my second year at Washington, um, I work with Carrie Luke, she's a parent educator over there. You just tell the internet is not quite what it should be now. Um, terminology, you're gonna see this presentation, um, right now, we're calling English learners. It's been known to be E S L, E L L, M L. Whatever reason it keeps changing. Hang on just a minute. Disconnected due to a connection error, imagine that. Hang on.
I say we don't have to refer an update.
You guys want to share so you can sit on this side and see?
You can see.
There's one, but you could probably find it.
I can go get them.
I did bring my cord with me, but it was not wanting to accept my cord either, so.
You can probably email us, get the presentation too, it'd be just fine.
Yes, I already did.
I don't, yeah. Probably email directly to you.
I don't know.
Julie sent it from her school, so it'd be a C poppy.
To the E man.
I sent it to school emails.
She said, you guys, she sent it to you guys. Join your team.
We'll try it again, technology is great when it works. Okay. So these, all these acronyms, it might be something different at some point. So newcomers you'll hear, that's students that come in, they have little to no English proficiency. Um, perhaps recent arrivals. Emerging, those are students at level ones and twos in all four domains. These domains are um, reading. Speaking, listening. Progressing, uh, those are most often a fixture, one, twos, threes, proficient, um, level fours and fives at all four domains. Okay. Students identify. Wants to come in. It's kind of stuck.
It must be the connection, it must be the connection.
It's the connection.
Cause it's on your, when you hit the button, it pops your computer screen.
It's, it's, yeah, that's why, that's why when I, I bring my cord. And I go teach at the middle school because I don't do that because it's just not reliable. Okay, so first, how do we identify if students need um, English language instruction? There's a home language survey that comes and if it says that they, there's another language spoken in the home, then. Um, that's when we start to talk to them and figure things out, look at school records. See if school records say they have previous language instruction. Um, so these are the four domains that they are screened over when they come in. This test that the screening we do is a lot shorter and we get the results within a day or two. Um, they're considered proficient and not needing service if they're in fours or fives.
What do you mean by get the result, so you guys aren't scoring these tests, you're sending them?
No, they are, they go through state of Iowa through the Elba.
Online, it's really a lot heavier than it used to be.
Um, there is one portion where we do hand score, they're speaking, but otherwise it's.
We still have to put the score in and then the state decides.
So are these kids working on a computer?
Yes. Unless they are um. Yeah.
Unless they totally.
Really wish we could figure out how to do this.
But you guys probably have a pretty good sense from talking to them, you've, you've worked, especially you, Sheri, you've worked with.
It's fairly challenging, some of the students, there was a student, she was new and I thought, oh great, she's going to, she's going to, you know, no problem. She was, I mean, seriously, sounded more intelligent in our speaking, I probably would use those, I mean, I, the better words I would have chosen. But her reading and writing, it's gotta be, and it's a really. Seems like it's a really tough test.
I was gonna say that there's a big difference between our basic interpersonal communication, so like our basic social language day to day. And that's where we usually hear kids, oh, they are speaking fine, but Elba twenty one really focuses on the academic language and seeing where they're at on that.
That makes sense, thanks for telling me.
Were people able to hold their land on their device issue? I just, I don't.
Just do it with your school email.
Yes. So how are students tested yearly, so February, March is, there's a window, I don't know if it's like thirty days or something, but. It's called the Elba twenty one, which stands for English Language Proficiency Assessment. Of the twenty first century. Um, same domains, it's a lot longer test, a lot of times you don't give the whole thing at once, it's in sections. Um, that is done. Depending on how each teacher wants to do it, for my kindergarteners, I might only have a couple in the room doing it. You know, if you're older students, you might be able to have more students. Um, we get the results, we have to wait clear till May. Um, and then it was, it's towards the end of school. And then um, they're considered proficient if their scores are fours and fives. Uh, Washington. Okay, they're, right now we have forty two students. Um, thirty two are two keys. Um thirty-two are Tukey's. Or you know, or native Tukey speakers, ten are Spanish. And we have one that's, this is an Indian language, one of the official languages. Uh she is not enrolled in EL, she does not need it. Um so how, how do we provide services to them? This wants to come up. Um so I usually pull two to five students out of the classroom. Now, they come into my classroom. Um. I try to group them first by grade level. So kinders with kinders first, second, third. Uh next, I look at their proficiency level, so. I try to get them like, if most of them are in like a, I don't know, maybe they, they're all like a two in reading, I try to group them together. Um, you know, listening, reading, sometimes it's hard because they don't match exactly, some might be a little more proficient in some areas, but I do my best. Um, and then I am doing some push-in assist with kindergarten. Um Carrie Luke, she is a parent educator, so. Before we start our schedule, I ask the teachers, where, where's your greatest need? And then we, they're like, they tell us where they need to help most with the kids, and then that's how we set up her schedule. And then um this quarter's just ended, so I'm gonna ask the teachers again, is there any? Um. Do we need to change anything up? So we're, this constant communication with teachers, how are things going and? And whatnot.
That's a lot. Um does anybody go to the preschool? Are there any?
No, we don't.
In the spring, we can test them. I mean, there's a, and the Elba twenty-one's um screener. It um. Once they, if they're going to be in kindergarten the next year, they can um, we can screen them then, and then we'll know right away in the fall if they qualify. It's, it just depends. Um I only did that one year when I was at Washington, or when I was up here, but. Because um it was like a lot of the students here were on field trips, so it worked out really well with my time, because I had, I had time that I could do that, and then it gave me um then the stall. Or that fall, then I already knew more of my students, and I didn't have to test so many students. So we'll know which ones would be likely that we need to do the screener form, but it's once they go into kindergarten that we, that they're actually accessing services.
Okay.
And they still, um they still do the home language survey. Um so. And. Anybody that registers, um that's part of like the registration packet, it includes a home language survey, so if there's any other language other than English listed, then. They let us know.
Okay, this is my last slide. I'm taking, I try to take pictures of them at the beginning of the year. And um. I put these, they're, they got to choose their um. They put their face into an AI one, so right now, this year, we're doing like adventure travel theme. So a lot of them picking like their mountain climbing, or they're swimming with sharks, or you know, they're doing fun things, so those are up in the room, they love to look at those every single day. Um but this is just a snapshot, and they're generally very happy kids. They're, they're really fun to work with, and they're generally very happy. But this is just.
Julie.
A good.
Do you find that with your kindergarten and first graders, just being in classrooms where English is being spoken all the time, like, are they up taking it pretty quickly?
Yes.
So then.
The younger they are, yes. Because, you know, and when you get to these levels, not only they're trying to learn the language, you're trying to learn content.
And I think there's a, like a belief that, you know, we learn it faster as we're younger, but really, we're willing to take those risks. Once you become a middle schooler or a high schooler, you're really worried about what other people may think, and not quite the same.
My turn is done, and I will be over here. I just.
Eleven.
Even for me. It's probably, okay, okay. I probably did. Oh, I am so advanced. Here, you do this. Julie, what do you?
Can I just do it?
Is, nope, I've got it right here.
Okay.
It's gonna be back in just a minute.
Oh, per exploding together.
I have a couple, but I'll wait till the.
Okay, okay. So I'm Sheri Anderson. I teach um. Schuler in middle schools, reads four through eight. Um we have a parent educator who's also a parent of um some students, and then also the Spanish translator. Donnie Liam, she's been here longer than I have. She's really, really good with the kids. So like we just spoken at Schuler Middle School, these are the languages of the English learners. Um, and I just put the numbers up because everyone only speaks, but it's mostly Spanish, you know, and then. So I have forty students right now that I serve. Um thirty-two speak. Tukey speech. One is Pompeian, which is a variation of Tukey's, and then one student speaks Chinese. And um we also have two students that have been exited that speak. Sabano, how do you?
I'm guessing it's Sabano. I'm not sure. It's from the Philippines.
Yes. So, but they've both, one didn't qualify when she came, and the other um was exited, so. And then I just put the birth country here, because um like almost a little over half of my students are born, were born in the United States. Um, so we have one student in China, from China, one from like, or thirteen from Micronesia. One from Guatemala, one from Ex, or two from Mexico. One from Nicaragua, and yeah, twenty-two are from the United States in US tariffs. They're like Guam, if they were born in Guam, but still considered the United States. So the emerging students, um they're students that score all ones, so. And there's even a level from like, cuz you think of like of a child who's, when they're newborns to when they're one. So in that year, you know, there's quite a difference of what they can do, and that's kind of similar um to the emergent students, so. Or between like the levels ones and two. So if they're ones, if they have all ones, or ones and twos, um they're considered emergent. Um progressing, they can have, they could be like a level three in speaking. And ones, which means that they've really struggled in reading, writing, and um listening, and um they're still considered progressive, as long as they have. One of the four that are three, so it's. It's kind of confusing. Um, but it's, yeah, we're working through it. Um four of these students are newcomers. Um which means that they've been in the United States um typically three years or less, or furniture language, so. Um the middle school, six emerged at eighteen progressing, and ten of those are newcomers. Um, so when they, like we were saying earlier, when they start younger, it does seem to really, it's, it's very beneficial. Um some of our newcomers are already progressing, which is great. So the total of forty students that I work with, and then um we also have three students who have exited. Within the past two years, so we just keep documentation, uh we just check in with teachers, make sure they're doing okay, and um. Don't need to be like reevaluated, and then fourteen students total have been exited. I guess I wrote that twice. Oh, this was just from the beginning, so I started here. Um, we had about. I think when I started, there were twenty-four on my list, so a lot of them moved out um or moved away, but then we had a lot of new students, so. It's kind of, I mean, it's definitely growing, but I, I wish I could have or would have included, like, how many students moved in and moved out, because. It's just, it takes a lot of time by the time you get all the paperwork and testing done, and then. So, um that's just something that makes, I, I love my job, but it's like, I just had a student, um she wasn't even here a month. So we have a month to get the paperwork sent home, had it ready to send home, and she moved, so it's just so.
Yeah. That's.
And you, do you have a sense where they're moving? Are they moving out of district, or are they going? At a state?
Mostly out of state. Um, we had, yeah, mostly out of state. Or back, like, so they come from out of state for a little bit, and then they go back.
Okay.
So, um but I think, I don't think we've had any of that. Have moved out of. Well, we did. We had some that were having some trouble with housing. Couple of families last year that did move out of. Yes. That were nearby, but I'd agree that most of the time it's to another state, and that, you know, being close to family support systems. Um, I work at the high school, and I do not have a parent, so I'm one at the high school. So I currently have thirty-three students for nine through twelve. Um twenty-four of my students speak Tukey's, seven Spanish, one Danish, one Chinese. While we're waiting for this, I don't wanna thank you too for talking about hiring these wonderful people. I remember when, yeah, one of, it was. Me and this world, I know.
I do too.
They are amazing, like, they are seriously, you couldn't have found better people. I was afraid we would just hire people that applied, because not too many people are certified to this, and who, you know. It's, yeah, but anyway, but they are amazing, so thank you for them, so. Um, so I have cert, seven current newcomers. Um, when we were talking about enrollment numbers, our reaction was, we didn't realize numbers were down, because our numbers are always going up. Um, I had, so. Seven, like, very recent, um very low proficiency, because new to the language. And then I have eight long-term ELs, so that's if they are in the program for five or more years. And so that means that we're not meeting that proficiency status, um because we hope that we reach that in five to seven years. Um, so out of my thirty-three, I have seventeen that are qualified as emerging, and so that means those are my students that. They are gonna be more shy, even with that basic day-to-day language, they might not be outspoken. They're gonna need a lot more help in academic language and in the classroom. Um and then my sixteen progressing, they're more of the students that maybe you wouldn't guess that they're English learners, because, you know. They're talking to their friends all the time, they comfortable with what they're doing, but they still need that support with academics. Um and then at the high school, we have seven students that have exited the program, and one of those is being monitored right now. I'm not sure if we had mentioned, when they exit, they're monitored for two years to see if we need to provide language services.
Lindsay, those long-term ones, is it usually because they didn't have any English exposure until they came, and they came when they were older?
No, so those students have been, well, many of them in the district for um several years, I think so, um like eight years. And so that's why I'm really happy that Julie's at the elementary school, because we know that if we have a really strong start, we're less likely to see the long-term ELs. Um and it's a lot harder for those ones to exit. So the instruction strategy that I use is push-in instruction, so um. That's where I'm going into classrooms, it's not pull-out. Um I want to be providing that support in their general ed classrooms. In the content, because we're getting academic language and content at the high school level. So it's a lot of scaffolding and making sure that we're getting the support that we need. So um I'm in two sections of Algebra I, English one, two, three, and four, and then one section of American History.
When you say you're providing support, what does that look like, since I'm assuming you don't speak all those languages?
I do not. So um I previously taught in Marshalltown, so I, especially for math, I can kind of do okay with Spanish. Math, but Tukey's, it's always trying different things. Um I'll do a lot of like, did you hear me? Do you understand? Um, like, if I'm dividing, we take it apart, a lot of gestures that I use the same way over and over.
So are you working with the translator service, or?
No, we do not currently have.
That's what I was gonna say, that's been a tough position for us, and Phil and team were the. Recent, you know, recent history, you know.
It's been really interesting too, because um at first, when I started teaching ESL, I thought it would be beneficial to have translators for them. But it's actually, it prevents them from learning English, because they became so reliant on it, and um. I would say that some of my long-term ELs are definitely uh more reliant on using Translate. And so I really push them that, you know, when we're in English class, hey, I want you to write this. One that I'm thinking, I want to write this in Spanish, that is fine, and then I want you to think about it and try writing, so like, I'm already doing it again, like, this is just how I can talk to the students. Um, I want you to try changing it, translating it yourself. Then we can check some stuff, but I don't want you going straight to Google.
It sounds Google Translate.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so. Always working on content as well as our language proficiency. Um, the reason, one of the reasons why push-in strategies are beneficial is that not everybody is trained for ELL, but ELL is. Going to be best practice strategies that are beneficial to everyone. And um so modeling different strategies, and then teachers kind of pick up on that, which I've seen. And then it's beneficial for everybody, um because they're. Useful strategies, and then I also regularly share resources, and my teachers at the high school know that they can just reach out, and I'll stop by any time and. Figure out what we can do to make something attainable.
Um, I was just gonna, I, I mean, obviously, it takes a lot of TLC from you guys to get them to this spot, and that was my original question, was the translator, cuz. I know that's been, and I guess I'm speaking to the Tukey's population, just because it seemed like we fired one, and then. Whatever reasons, you know, and then we don't have one, and I guess that was gonna be what it um.
So.
Is there anything that we can try and do to help? I mean, cuz you're roughly a hundred and twenty students, give or.
I think you were one seventy.
Say about thirty in a building, so just give or take, easy math, but.
Uh, so we, like I said, we don't translate everything, because we want it to be exposure to language with support. Um, but, I mean, if we have a service that helps, especially with parent phone calls, or when we have a meeting, like, I'm looking at possibly evaluating one of my students for special ed services. But there are questions, I need to be able to um talk with a parent to figure some stuff out.
And you would probably just, I mean, would use on some type of online resource for that, or?
I think we have.
It's in the.
Yes, I think that it's, it's set up, it's just we're waiting on a code for, so, and we hope that code comes quickly.
When, yes, so it's called Language Line, and it, it costs, of course, so um we're helping. And Google Translate can help, like, translate some of the documents, so if I had just a simple lesson or something, word to word, and it's not always perfect. But we, we wouldn't use that source for everything, but when we need to contact parents, um I have a student too that I need to interview, and so, um but it should be any.
Yeah, we're just, we signed up for, we signed a contract with it, it's paid for service, so it's only paying for the minutes that we use, we're just waiting for the implementation of it.
So I had used Language Line in Marshalltown, because that's where I taught for ten years before I came here, and so.
But it's probably necessary when you're doing some of those. I mean, it's not, I mean, we, every once in a while, we run across something at Sheriff's Office, and you have to.
Yeah.
Uh, you, you have to call them, you just have to use it, because it's, could potentially be, you know, a fairly important conversation that you don't wanna, not that you're, you know, but you don't wanna be. Doing your techniques in the classroom when we're talking, you know, but.
Like, we know, we, with Google Translate, we know it's not perfect, and we also know that direct language is more accurate. Um because with English, especially like, I think as Midwesterners, we kind of like. You know, aren't always direct with what we're saying, so, but if we do that, it's more helpful.
One thing absurd in elementary levels is, is sometimes the students will help each other.
Yes.
So somebody's more proficient than somebody else.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of times, they could talk with another, and they get it resolved.
Yeah.
I mean, I was just, even the students are translating for the parents. I was talking to one of my. Third graders yesterday, he's like, my mom says I'm her interpreter, but she's also trying to learn English too. I'm like, yeah, exactly, I mean, you. So it's, they, even if we can't communicate, they have, they're our peers, you know, that they can talk.
They often actually want to help each other, because they know what it's like when they're struggling.
But legally, we have to have that service, because I'm, it just, just so.
Yeah.
We're not supposed to ask a child or somebody else to.
Right, so like.
But, but, yeah, oh, yeah.
In situations.
I just meant.
Like I said. Uh, math and Spanish, I mean, I'm not wonderful, but like, enough to get the point across. Whereas um I have very brand-new newcomers, Portuguese, and um just using Google Translate for multiply, and they're like, no, no, that's not the right word. I'm like, what word should I use, because we're, so we can make a connection. Uh, so the students do help each other out, but when we do have issues where someone gets in trouble, or if we need to reach out about something. Like that would be more personal, then that's like, obviously, we can't have students helping out all the time.
And this question's mostly for you, Sheri, cuz you've been here a little while. Um, in terms of the Tukey's population of students that we have, are you seeing those numbers like increasing? Or are they fluctuating, or do we have kids who are like coming out and then moving somewhere else, and then, you know, so you've got more or less the stable amount, but it's just.
It seems like, um nevertheless, I think last year we ended up around the same number, so we had. Maybe ten or twelve students or maybe more move out, um than I had.
And some.
They graduate. Yeah, yeah, so it's. Yeah, I don't know if I answered your question, but, but yeah, we have, it does seem like more of the Tukey's families um. Yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah, I don't know if I answered your question, but, but yeah, we have, it does seem like um more of the Chukies families um move out. And, you know, they're, they're just, they travel a little.
At least, so they might be here for a couple of years, but, yeah, then.
Yes. Or even a couple of weeks, um, so, yeah.
What types of things are you doing, or do you have planned for like outreach to families? Or uh I'm thinking evening events or type things where you're involved in, and then my second part of that is. What can we do to help? I, I'm understanding, obviously, the Translate software would be helpful.
Yeah, we had talked about possibly doing something this summer, but it just didn't work out, I guess, but um we thought it would be nice. Like, early fall or, but, but like, I guess I'm trying to, I, I'm sorry, I know what I'm saying, I just get nervous. But I'm, I'm a better teacher than presenter, um, so, anyway, um, but yes, we have some. Some um like JMC, so not all, all of our families have JMC. So a lot of our information gets sent through JMC or through emails, and not all of our families have that. And a lot of our families, even their phones, they might, they change a lot, so just um. Yeah, things, things like that, but we, we have a list of things that we would like to include. I know we, um, whatever, I'm not sure about this, but the funding that used to go to AEA, I think last spring. Was it, was it, that, was that right, that we, we were going to get some of that funding available, or have some of that funding available to use for those? Do you remember? We, we talked about that at one of the meetings, do you remember? Oh, anyway, but um, but yes, we would like to have a family night or some type to just. And we had discussed a place for people to get together, and then we also said just, um, what different services could we have for it? Like, making sure we're set up with JMC, so we, families know how to check grades, how to check attendance. Um, and then maybe a way to help get physicals so that we can participate in any sports.
Immunizations, yes.
To more of a summer type thing to prep for this.
Yes. Well, if we had had, if we had had Daniels, you know, still with us, we had talked about having before school, like, you know, maybe a couple of weeks out. Have this so that we had everybody, you know, there, like, if we, we need, you know.
Yeah.
The nurse, the, you know, making sure the paperwork is complete, you know, all of that, but. You know, and a translator, you know, for the majority, um, and so, I mean, right now, it's. So your answer to your question is, have we thought about community outreach? Yes.
Is that even something in, you know, and I don't know whether it has to wait till next year, or whether it could be at a different time. But even if it's something, and, and I guess I'm asking Lisa too, that we could pay for on a contractual basis. So even if we can identify a translator that is maybe not gonna work for the school district. Um, a hundred percent of the time, but might be available for some evening events. But I don't know whether AEA can help us with that, or the hospital, or other people who have translators.
Um, and I know that we, all of us, we share families, so we had discussed if we did something together, then we'd be able to all.
Yeah, I'm thinking, because a lot of those parents have kids in all three or four buildings.
So there, my other question would be, uh, so you guys have talked about some of the maybe cultural differences, um, with some. I guess we kind of got into the Chukies, but some of the other, what's their, um, and I say this because I, my kids have teammates that are. Eh, how is their uh attendance? I know sometimes that's, and I assume that. When you're trying to learn something and learn another language at the same time, you gotta get some steam going and, and. I'm sure day-to-day is very important, and I, I know that that's, you know, I know when I coach little kids basketball, some. When practice starts at four, sometimes it's hard to be there, you know, it's, it's just a, and that's just their culture. So, you know, and so I don't know, I just was curious, as a general statement, how their attendance was.
So that's one thing that uh we talked about and they wanted to improve, so I went through the attendance list today, actually. And it looks like I've got eight of my forty-two have had perfect attendance um since first quarter. So I made certificates for them, and they have each a little tree bag, I'm gonna take their picture, we'll put it on the wall, so trying to do things to promote that.
Um. And Julie was amazing, and she shared that spreadsheet with us and shared the canvas, so I also had eight of my thirty-three. That had perfect attendance for the first quarter, and I don't know if you had timed it.
I did. It's really awesome.
Yes, yeah, yes, so we're trying, you know, and it comes with, you know, the kids, do the kids, are the kids wanted, do they, you know?
That's.
That's a big thing, is if, if they come to school, they're happy, and, you know, no matter what age level. You know, that's a big thing to get them to come to school.
I've had teachers ask me, or they feel like maybe they're not doing enough with the students very low proficiency, I'm like, you. Were greeting them every day with a smile and being warm, you're showing them that you want them to be there, like, at the very beginning. Sometimes that's all we can do, um, but you also go with your um timing thing. So um there's like cool climate kind of cultures, and then there's warm cultures. So warm cultures are very much looser with start times and whatnot. So it's not, um, doesn't really follow dominant culture that we have. Um, one thing to try to help, I'm talking at the high school of possibly having my prep first period. Because I know that I have some stragglers that are always coming in a little late. And if we have a core class first period, then that means that we're missing out on that instruction. So I'm gonna see if I can get electives first period, so that I can then be in co-teaching con- core content later in the day. That's been very helpful too, at the middle school, we have a win now, the, the first twenty-four minutes. And most of my students this year, it's more tardy than, than not showing up, and then even from class to class. Okay, you know, stop talking, I, I know you're, you know, I know you're friends, say goodbye, and go to class, because I see them, and they're just like. And I went, I was invited to a wedding this summer of two students, and um the wedding started at two o'clock, and it started at. It's at three thirty or four thirty, it was crazy, but I got to visit with a lot of families, well, not a lot, of course, there were just two families there, but, but anyway, but then. There were probably three hundred people there, so it was amazing.
Anything else? Okay, good, thank you guys so much. That's really great, thank you so much, and um some of those, like, you know, the needs, especially the connecting with families and stuff like that. Just like elevate that to Stacy, and she'll make sure that, you know, we'll post about, and we get to hear about it, and.
Thanks.
Hey, thank you.
I said, love some lovely questions later.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, uh, we have some action items that we're gonna get through tonight. The very first one is a change to the employee handbook. Dr. Johnson, if you want to tell us a little bit about that.
Sure, yeah, I remember the last board meeting, uh, we had discussed this, um, section of the handbook that dealt with insurance. And the board really wanted us to work at making sure that the employees felt that there's still insurance offered. And to include that into a paragraph, so um met with Mike McDermott, and we now had a new proposal. And I don't know if it shows up as, as a light lime green highlight, but you can see where it's crossed out. And then uh we adjusted it, it's, it's pretty similar language, so that's what we're proposing.
Oh, yeah, okay, now I, I just begin to see it, it's very, very pale, okay, gotcha, all right.
So it's still telling the employees that, that there is insurance offered.
But clarifying the language.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, we'll take a motion to.
We'll move.
Second. Uh, yes. Uh, Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Thank you, our second action item, item B is um a bid from Wilson Restaurant Supply for the nutrition program. For to get a hot well and serving line.
Yeah, so Director of Student Services or Nutrition, Natalie Ritter, they're in need of purchasing a new hot well. And uh this is a company that they do most of their um purchasing from, so that's what she's recommending.
I move to approve the bid from Wilson Restaurant Supply in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-six cents for a hot well.
Hey, Laura?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Um, action item C, um, we have some FFA students who have an overnight trip out of state. Where are they going?
Indianapolis, excellent. And that usually rotates, I think, between five different cities, something up throughout the Midwest.
I think it's.
I will approve the overnight trip for the.
So you, Christie?
Yes.
Okay, Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Okay, action item D, uh, there's a consent agenda involving F C L A fundraising. Uh, for, well, for plus hires and uh one resignation. Anyone can choose to remove an item or just to um make a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
I move to approve the entire consent agenda.
One second.
Okay, Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, upcoming dates, we have two more town hall meetings, and I did just wanna check with the board. Um, both of those are during parent-teacher conferences um from four to six. We have a brief discussion before the town hall tonight about whether that would just be a kind of meet and greet and answer questions or a more formal presentation. And I'm wondering, um, what board members are able to be at either of those.
End up for one of them, I'm not sure which one.
Okay.
But I can be at both.
Okay. I know I can't do Wednesday, um, Thursday's a possibility.
I can do Wednesday.
I could probably do Wednesday at work, or I can.
I think Wednesday is here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna say the, the municipal.
I, I'm not able to do Wednesday, I can do Thursday if needed.
Okay, good. Thanks, you guys, um, um, yeah, great to make it, so last week before the election. Uh, I will remind anybody who's listening to go out and vote on November fourth, or apparently you can go over to the courthouse and vote uh in advance. We have a regular board meeting held at the High School Media Center in our usual location on November twelfth. That will still be with this board, because the, even though we will know who the new board's gonna be, the results of the election are not certified. So we can't swear in any board members, uh, and so we still have. Many things that need to be approved and voted on, and so that's what we'll do on November twelfth, is with the old board. And then the soonest that we possibly can uh swear on the new board is November eighteenth, and so we will do a meeting, I'm right about that, right, Lisa?
We have more than one county, and so they won't let you certify them to all three counties, and so that's the eighteenth is the earliest.
Yeah, eighteenth is the earliest, because it's two weeks after the election, I think was the deal, so. Um, and so that will, organizational meeting will probably be relatively short. Um, six-thirty, and probably also held at the High School Media Center, I think, right? Uh, and right after that will be the ISB School Board Convention, and I'm sure we will have to post that. Because board members will be together, although we will not be discussing any real school particular business. It'll take a motion to adjourn. So move.
Start again.
All in favor?
No.
Excellent, uh, we're adjourning this special meeting, and um in about one minute, we're gonna open up a school board work session. And really, that's just gonna be, Lisa's gonna present to us, so.
The camera will also go off for the work session.
And the camera's gonna go off for the work session, because it's just gonna be Lisa talking about numbers.
She has a twelve-minute timeline.
Oh, she, she does not have a twelve-minute timeline, and twelve minutes, it's like fifty slides, how am I gonna get through twelve minutes?
I have fifteen minutes.
You're gonna go, Lisa.
Let's see, all of us set our alarms on our phones right now.
Start on slide twenty-three then.
This is fun.
We're more fiscally competent this year, since there's not whatever's this year, so you can roll.
Fifteen minutes. You guys are just cruel.
Y'all are gonna wanna see this, though.
Did it to end it?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Yeah. Josh, how do we shut this thing off again?
No idea.
Uh, I just uh X out everything and close it, is what he says to do.
I didn't know that was the formal protocol, I just, that's, that's my button acting approach.
I just go to the top and hit everything that's red until it goes to the home.